Cathy, nothing.
Cathy will be with us in about 25 minutes.
Oh, okay.
So approval of agenda, any late items? Seeing none, motion to adopt seconded. All in favor, ask unanimously. Okay, anything Tyler that I should know about before we start?
Just one on table item relating to item 2.1. Like part of your agenda, actually.
Okay.
Actually, what?
So without further ado. Yeah.
You're up, Raj.
You're up.
Thank you, everybody, and good morning. Budget 2018.
Yeah.
I should have brought bagels and cream cheese. I don't know if anybody's seen the commercial. Budget time, budget time, budget time. Everybody gets excited about the budget. Woo-hoo!
Yeah, woo-hoo! Yeah!
I'd like to actually start off by just thanking staff. They've put a tremendous amount of work over the past couple of weeks into helping me get a budget together for 2018. Essentially, when I started here, we basically had to figure out how to get our budget software working. Information was basically not in and stuff, so everybody has been extremely helpful in helping me figure things out and getting everything together. So there's a lot of work that's gone into getting us to here up until today. But today's meeting is actually to give all of you an idea of what's included in the budget, what's happened over the past year, before we go out to public consultation next week. And I've got a PowerPoint to kind of summarize what we've gone through, where we're at. And sorry, I haven't used this Flickr record. Which button do I use to forward it?
Yep, the one that...
It's here.
Looks like it's a bit worn out.
Oh, that one, okay. So maybe I'll just start out by letting you know the approach that I've taken to putting the budget together. Essentially, I've taken a look at all non-taxation revenue that we expect in 2018. I've removed the impact of all previous years' transfers to and from reserves. In the operating budget, any unused project budgets for one-time initiatives have been carried forward so that they're not impacting the tax rate surplus. And then staff went through and reviewed all of their line items for their expenditures and revenues and reallocated, but they did not build in new requests into the budget. And then staff essentially submitted requests for new items separately, and we'll look at those separately. What did I miss up there? Yeah, the only thing that we've worked into the budget is we've adjusted contract requirements or helpful resolutions that were approved in 2017. Items that council has asked staff to put into the budget for 2018 have been taken into consideration. And of course, compensation for staff has been built into the budget as well. So with that approach being applied, where we end up is essentially new construction revenue. So that's newly found revenue this year equates to about 129,000 of additional revenue, which is about a 2.8 percent, equivalent to a 2.8 percent tax rate relief. A 1 percent increase in taxes would be about $46,000. Other revenue increases, which consist of new permit revenue and some bylaw fines revenue, is going to be about 26,200. And then our expenditure is essentially compensation increase based on the CPI, which is a, I understand, is a policy-based increase. Contract increases during the year, primarily it's the contract for waste removal and recycling. And any other increases that council approved or requested during the year. I believe there was an item for, what was it? Sorry, emergency response notification system. So all of those items combined total $361,000 in costs. Essentially, if you combine the new revenues and these decisions, we need an additional 205,600 in funding, which equates to about a 4.4 percent tax increase. We have a renewal and replacement policy of 1.5 percent increase per year to put towards the renewal and replacement reserve per capita. New operating requests put forward by staff total $67,100, which is the equivalent of 1.4 percent tax increase. And requests from the library total $35,000 for 0.8 percent. So at the end of the day, we need an additional $378,000 to balance the budget, which equates to about an 8.1 percent tax rate increase. So what does that mean to the resident? Well, assessments went up by about 10 percent from the previous year in 2018. So the average assessed value of a residential property on Bowen Island was $1,054,000 in 2018, which increased by about $93,800. So all other things being equal, before we take any of the municipal tax increases into consideration, a property that paid $2,090 in taxes last year that was assessed at $960,000 will still pay $2,090. So this is just to clarify that an increase in the assessment value at the average rate does not translate into an increase in taxes. So if your property went up in value by 10 percent, you'd be paying the same amount of taxes in this year as you did last year, provided there is not a tax rate increase. That being said, when we look at the previous page, our, essentially, our policy increases, contract increases and council increases translate into an additional $92 a year for the average household. The renewal and replacement policy translates to about an increase of $31. And the new operating requests, which were about $76,000, translate to the increase of $29 a year. Library requests at 17. So the impact on the average assessed household of $1,054 would be $169. That $169 is the 8.1 percent tax increase.
Do we have the amount for the fire hall, or what about that?
That's, the fire call is capital. So I've looked at the budget through two separate lenses. There's the operating lens and the capital lens. So basically, what we do at capital is everything that we collect from the tax rate, a certain amount goes towards capital. So we've increased the amount that we collected last year by $69,600, which will all go into the reserves. And then we'll fund the fire call through the reserves. One thing I have not accounted for, and I just realized that on the weekend, is an increase in the tax funding, sorry, the tax rates for the loan for the fire call. So I have to take that, I have to take that into consideration. That's not taken into consideration. I think that's what you're asking, Maureen. We borrowed 2.2 million, and that's something I have to, yeah, I have to take that into consideration. That'll be an additional...
Raj, that would show up on this year's tax bill?
It would show up on this year's tax bill, so it'll be higher than the 8.1 percent. I'll have to go back and recalculate that item.
But we won't be borrowing the whole amount, you know, from day one. So what I said was $68 a year when we did the referendum, we'll opt for 3 million. And by the time we start paying it out, it will be a half a year's map, you know, if we will start, yeah.
So that's, yeah, I guess that's the question, Raj, is that if we figure on only a partial year of funding of that loan, does that decrease the amount of that line item on everybody's taxes for one year only?
Yeah.
And it will.
It should, yeah, for this year, and then part of it will be reflected next year.
So to answer your question, Maureen, it's not included, but it's not as much as you think.
So I will put that in before I go to the public. So that 8.1, depending on what the annual cost is, will be higher. It'll be higher than the 8.1 that I have in the presentation here. So again, now, this is the average assessed value is 854,000. Just for your information, the median value of a property on Bowen Island is about $834,000. And that means that 50 percent of the properties on Bowen are assessed above 834, and 50 percent are assessed below 834. And the same impact that we're looking at of 169 that I've shown here would translate to about $134 per house, to the median household. So a hundred, so half of the households would, their taxes would go up by more than 134. And for half the households, the taxes would go up by less than 134 if the increase was 8.1 percent.
But that also includes bare land, where there is no household, right?
Well...
On the median value.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, fair enough.
And that's for residential, which is large?
It's just residential, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So for ease of math, when you go to the public, can you convert that also to per hundred thousand assessed value?
It is, yes.
Or, I mean, to tell the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what is it per hundred? You have more than that ever.
Sorry.
Per hundred thousand?
The $169 increase would be on the assessed value number.
Yeah, no, but if you tell everybody it's per hundred thousand, and your house is a million, you just do times ten. If your house is a million five, you do times 15 sort of thing. So it just is easier to, okay. So the $1,054 is the average value?
Yes.
What you're saying would be like seventeen dollars per hundred?
Can you break it down so you know how much you're paying per hundred thousand?
I can break, I've got that down.
Seventeen dollars per hundred?
For communicating that.
Yeah, so you're asking for the mill rate, I'm assuming.
Well, no, I mean, just if you said, like you said, it's going to be 189, 169, 189. Increase for the million dollar house.
Just divide it by 10.
Then, so if you said that 169 equates to so much per hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, then those of us that don't divide well with our calculators can do it quick and dirty and say, well, my...
Oh, okay, apply it to the value of your house.
...is 1.5, then I'll just add, multiply that by...
It's sixteen dollars and three cents per hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Do you want to make the noise?
So essentially, going now, I've basically, the next few slides are just giving you an idea of what we've included in each of those summary increase areas. So when we were looking at the 200, sorry, the 361,000 in expenditure increases over the year, those include basically the organizational restructuring that took place in the organization, the hiring and, by organizational restructuring, replaced your finance manager with a director of finance. And you made other, you approved other compensation increases during the year. You also hired, approved the hiring of a new planner. There were CPI-based compensation adjustments of 2.1 percent applied to existing staff. The waste and recycling contract calls for a 3 percent increase. Again, it's a CPI-based increase. And we also approved the, basically, an annual expenditure for an emergency response notification system. And that basically is part of the net 4.4 percent increase that we looked on, looked at on the previous, on the previous slide. And then moving over towards the new operating requests. New operating requests include basically training costs that are requested for our emergency responders. There are contract costs associated with the maintenance of our grass field and also costs of maintaining the artificial turf field on an annual basis are going up to be able to maintain the same level of service that we currently provide. The roads and maintenance department is asking to hire an additional summer student to carry out the service requirements of the municipality. And bylaws is proposing to provide more patrols on traffic and parking issues down primarily in the Cove area. Kenan Behavior was just a small little item, I should have actually not included it on here. The, again, there are increased costs associated on an annual basis with keeping the community engaged in communication. I mean, examples include planned wider distribution of the island plan and production of several publications and keeping the public informed on an ongoing basis of municipal initiatives. There are also annual professional fees associated with having to do environmental studies on municipal lands related to drainage and shoreline erosion, which are required by other levels of government. All of these costs are not huge on their own, but when it comes together, it works out to about $67,000 a year. But given the size of our community, it's a big increase. It's, I mean, given that, you know, 1 percent increase is $46,000 in taxes. All said and done, this translates to about a 1.4 percent tax rate increase here. And then in terms of the operating requests from the library, essentially, the library is looking to expand their opening from nine, sorry, on Sundays for nine months, which they're currently open to 12 months a year. And also with the expanded programming space and with the use of the library, they're finding that they need to spend additional on maintenance costs and cleaning the library. And then a smaller portion of that was the annual compensation CPI adjustment. Any questions on...
Well, when they say volunteer coordinator, is that, are they going to pay that person?
The coordinate, the, yeah, they would pay the coordinator, but yes, exactly.
Volunteers, got it.
Okay. And that's, in a nutshell, that's basically all of the operating requests. And I'm going to shift over to the capital program. So municipalities essentially spend money on maintaining facilities, roads, infrastructure, heavy-duty vehicles, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. And so I, what I've done with our capital program for this year is I've summarized it in the same way that most other municipalities look at their capital programs. So essentially, I've classified into five different areas. So facilities, transportation infrastructure, expenditures on heavy-duty equipment and vehicles, equipment and information technology, and public art. I couldn't figure out where else to put the one item that we have in the Cove, which was, I think, artisan-inspired painting on the block wall. So I created a category called public art. So basically, the 2018 budget is proposing $10,780,000 in capital costs to be funded through a combination of grant funding, funding from donations, and carry forwards of the previous year undone works, and also from our reserves as well. So I have not listed the funding sources in this presentation. This is more to give you an idea of what our capital program needs are for the year. So in the facilities program, essentially, we're carrying forward the budget for the design and development of the community center. Fire hall item is also being carried forward from the previous year. There are a bunch of small items that add up to $37,000. So improve access to Sandy Beach, improvements of three active parks, and putting pit toilets in at three local parks. And again, maintenance improvements to several facilities totaling $45,000. The handout that Tyler had given you, which was on table, actually has all of the individual items listed with the cost of, oh, all the individual items that we're going to be working on listed in here. So I won't go through that handout here. That's prepared that for you to kind of take away, have a look at. And then if you have any questions, by all means, give me a call. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. So moving on from the facilities program, in terms of transportation, roads and infrastructure resurfacing costs, we're anticipating it's going to be $432,000 for next year. And the details actually highlight a couple of the major areas where Bob plans on doing road maintenance work during the year. Culvert replacement is a very high priority project that needs to be done in 2018. Essentially, I understand that there are two culverts which are in very poor shape. And if those culverts were to go out, then a large part of the community... I will have all of the neighborhood names down packed for the next meeting. A number of neighborhoods will be cut off from accessing the rest of Bowen Island.
Oh, we don't want that part of the island. None of us will have care.
And aside from that, again, there are a number of initiatives which total $251,000. And again, details for each of those initiatives are highlighted in the package that you have. And anywhere where works were not completed last year, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be carrying forward, we'll put those unused funds back to the reserve and then take them out of the reserve that they came from. And then in terms of our heavy-duty equipment and vehicles, essentially, we have a plow and salt truck. Our salt truck is in pretty poor shape, I understand. It's about, is it 20 or 25 years old, Paul?
The green one, yes.
It's about 25 years old. We spent extensive amounts on repairs on that truck in 2016 and 17, I believe. And so it's being recommended that that truck be replaced simply because of the annual maintenance costs on it. And it also poses safety issues to staff who are operating it. It may not pass inspection following here. Pumper truck is, from what I understand, our pumper truck is in pretty good shape. But according to, I think it's the F U A, Fire Underwriters Associate, pardon?
FUS.
FUS, sorry, okay. It is, the age requirement may be sneaking up to impacting insurance rates for the community. So we put it in here as a council discussion item. You know, in terms of council should be aware that the age of the truck may impact insurance rates to the community. But whether, then we can have another discussion in terms of whether we actually need to replace it or not, or whether we have plans to replace it. And then there are a couple of vehicles requested. Parks and Environment needs an additional vehicle to meet their service levels. And the utilities truck is quite old. And again, just safety issues and whatnot related that require the replacement of that vehicle as well. More details are in the package that you have.
Is it this one?
Yeah. Details on each of those items are in there. And then in terms of equipment and IT, again, replacement of recreation equipment. I mean, it ranges from treadmills to bikes to treadmills, bikes, and other items. Again, each equipment item is listed in the handout package. The bike park is an externally funded item, which is included in the package here. And then marine spill response equipment, I don't believe that is grant funded. I thought it was, so it's something that we would be funding ourselves. Just got confirmation on that this morning. And then IT equipment, again, essentially, renewal and replacement of computers. iPads for council, we have a new council coming in 2017. And a few iPads for staff to be able to meet the service, their service requirements. And libraries also, again, that includes their regular renewal collection. That's the most part of the library, some requests for additional shelving, and I think a bulletin board at the library. And that's kind of it on the capital program. Any questions on the capital program?
Dare I ask, reserves at the end of the year compared to reserves at the beginning of the year? Have you had a chance to look it up?
I haven't had a chance to look at that. That is something I'll be doing in the next week or two.
Right.
Focus was on just getting everything together for the budget and whatnot. I mean, I've looked at what the balances were, but we do need to make our funding entries. None of those entries were made from the end of 2016 to reserve balances. So I'll have to do all of that coming up.
Just a few numbers plugged in.
Just a couple of numbers. And, oh, sorry.
Raj, well, in all those public for the capital things, I guess, part of it to me, whether you go ahead or not, would depend on, A, how much money we've got in reserves to cover those things, and whether if there's grant funding to do them too.
I did do a really quick permute, Alison, of the reserve balances. And anything that's included in the, I believe almost everything that's included could be done, with the exception of the big ticket items, like the fire truck reserve was inadequate to replace the fire, sorry, fire truck reserve was not adequate to replace the fire truck at this point in time.
And the trails work, that's...
The trails work generally, I've got to take a closer look because I'm not familiar with all of the exact bylaw requirements of whether we can draw on reserves. So what I did as an exercise as I was going through this, was I assigned a reserve that I thought it would be appropriate for funding to come from. And having summarized that against what the reserve balance was at the beginning of 2017, it appeared that we did have adequate reserves. But I will have that discussion with council at a subsequent meeting in terms of strategy, if those reserve balances are not adequate. So in terms of next steps, then, we should, we will be having our open houses next week on March the 13th and the 15th. One at 10:00 in the morning and another one in the evening, so that everybody who would like to attend has an opportunity to, with respect to their working situation, taking into consideration a lot of residents from Bowen Island work on the mainland. So hence, we've got the evening session on the 15th. And then we will basically be going to the finance committee with feedback and a more refined presentation of what we had today with budget proposal. And we'll bring the feedback from both the public and from the finance committee back to council. At a meeting, sorry, it says council, I should say committee of the whole there. My apologies for the typo there. To a meeting of the committee of the whole on March the 22nd. And I will basically be looking for council, council direction at that meeting to bring forward the five-year financial plan bylaw, which we'll bring forward on March the 26th, the first speed meetings. And following that, we'll bring the tax rate bylaw forward on April the 9th. And I will open it up to any further questions you may have. This is kind of been pulled together really, really quickly. Normally, municipalities start on this process in October and get here probably towards the beginning, you know, middle of January, February-ish. So once again, I, you know, really, really appreciate all of staff's efforts and all the work that everybody has put into making it possible to bring this forward to you guys within a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Any questions for Raj?
Yes.
Melanie and then Maureen.
This is pretty specific. So I went, had a chance to sit down with staff to go through how the proposed transportation plan linked up to this. And there was just one sort of missing item that was flagged to me. And I was wondering if I could bring that up for council consideration. And that was an element for the pedestrian network. And this is just to be able to make sure that we're able to make use of a pending grant to translate it to initiative. I think it's already come before the communications committee, and that is for branding and weight funding for the Spirit Trail. So that's about $20,000, and it's a 75 percent cost share. So I just wanted to see if that's an item we could put in just so that we could make use of that funding opportunity, so.
Sorry, what's the net cost of municipality for the Spirit Trail?
It's a $20,000, $20,000 is the budget for that bit. And it's 75 percent, so it would be $5,000.
Okay.
So it's not a huge amount, but, and that would tick the box then when the transportation plan is finally adopted. That covers the, that was what was sort of allocated for 2018 for the pedestrian network. So it just seems something worth taking advantage of. I'd hate to see us miss that.
Yeah, fair enough. Maybe I'll go around on each... Yeah, fair enough. Uh maybe I'll I'll uh go around on each of these as new items and then uh come back to them.
So we'll discuss that item after we've identified them all.
Yeah, let's do that first and then rather than getting into the weeds too far on any given one at this time. What was your mind?
Uh it's just concerning that March twenty-second meeting, I thought I'd be able to make that happen. I'm wondering if we have quorum for the meeting. Who's able to be here on the twenty-second?
Twenty-second is a committee of the whole, twenty-sixth, you mean?
No, twenty.
Twenty-second is a committee of the whole.
I won't be here.
I won't be here.
So that's three of us who won't be here.
All right, okay. So for the committee of the whole meeting, we won't, well, we'll have barely have quorum. Okay, so so we'll have to do some doodling.
Doodle?
Doodle pulling?
Doodle pulling to to.
I have, how many pull that week? It has to be the following week.
Can I just make one suggestion? The the following Monday, we have a morning council meeting where obviously we're gonna be here. Um not wishing to preempt this, but I wonder, uh I don't know how it fits with Rob's schedule, but if we can't do the twenty-second, could we do the twenty-sixth?
Well, the twenty-sixth at nine-thirty is the council meeting, so his hope was to bring it to a committee of the whole previous to that.
So we can push, I mean, this is the earliest we've ever done that, so I wouldn't be unhappy with doing the first three readings in the middle of April. And then we could have a committee of the whole in the afternoon of the twenty-sixth.
Okay, I hate getting into these calendar discussions because because they can go on for a while. Let's let's leave it with Tyler and Raj. Look at what Raj's desires are as far as what his timeframe is and then Tyler doodle pull us again to see what what gates will work with people. And then we will take it from there, okay? Okay, Alison, you had a, you want to raise?
Well, no, I wanted, I thought, I was wanting to ask a question about the um the wayfinder. And is Bonnie here?
Yeah.
There was a grant that came through Sherries and Bowen Island of five thousand dollars for signage. Where, has that been spent? It was to, you know, for the geo-tracking and all that stuff that done that the group was working on, the park signage, so.
That was for the Q R codes.
Yeah.
And really, okay, that I had downloaded with a group and that's my ability to know actually forward with the issue.
So if they haven't done that, then maybe if, I assume you'd want Q R codes on the Spirit Trail signs, so maybe that could be repurposed for that.
Okay, let's, I mean, that's a suggestion.
Yeah, it was money that came from the province through signs and.
Right. I I think to try to dig to a little bit broader thing, um normally, Raj, would you have something for these council initiatives? Um onboarding allowances in your budget, just because you'd never know what council's going to come up with in the course of the year as as five and ten thousand for initiatives that they want to participate in. Is there a number in the budget for this?
What we've got carried forward for now, I I noticed that there is a contribu-, there was a contribution last year to a council contingency and I I have to have that discussion with Kathy, whether that was used to fund those or not. But what I would how I would suggest council initiatives get funded is essentially at the end of the year, we take a look at because these are one-time costs and they're not ongoing. At the end of the year, when we do our financial statements, we take a look at um what we have for surplus. And surplus is used to fund one-time initiatives which are not ongoing. So that would include proj-, one-time projects by staff or essentially council initiatives would fall into that same category where they don't have an ongoing funding requirement. So there's a couple of different ways to do that.
So so at this point, we don't know what our surplus is at the end of twenty-seventeen?
No.
And that would be, okay.
Yeah.
So I think the answer to your question, Melanie, is we will have to figure out some way of doing it. And 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 it's not just, it's not just that item. Like I said, there there, we had council initiatives last year uh which was certainly handy in the course of the year as opportunities arose, especially when you can get seventy-five percent funding on something. Uh so we will uh definitely want that opportunity again this year. And if if we have a surplus left over from last year that can be carried forward, perfect. And and if we don't, then then we will ask Raj to tell us how we handle that. Is that fair enough? Does that work for you?
The only thing I was I'm not, I don't have full clarity on how the budget process works, but I was told by staff that this needed a line item so that the funder would be able to put the money. So I'm just making sure that whatever it is we need to have as a placeholder, that if we are successful in the funding, that.
Right, so show.
Translate and see.
Yeah, it it fulfills whatever the requirements translate needs to see for that result.
So we need a line in, I mean, I'm also, because it's a trail, it could fit into the parks budget. And signage for trails, right, fits in the parks budget. I was hearing Bonnie here. Um so if we put it as a capital item in the parks capital budget, then you've covered and show the fifteen thousand as grant funding. Five out of the reserve.
The multi-use pathway is more of a transportation thing than a trail?
Well, I thought this was the Spirit Trail and that's not a multi, that's, that's a walking biking path. Recreational path on the marsh shore.
So I think the 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 point here is um we have lots of sort of five and ten thousand dollar things that we assign in the course of the year. So typically, we would have a resolution of council to confirm to granting agencies and so on that there is a council resolution approving it. So where that uh money for the council resolution comes from, as long as we have a line item that we can draw from, it doesn't have to have that specific name written on it. It would be Trails and Signage or whatever. Uh or or council initiatives or, so I think that's more to your point, Melanie? So we can do a council resolution to fund that specific thing for the granting agencies and that's probably what they really want anyway. Uh and and.
Oh, that we've already got, right?
Alison and then Maureen.
Okay, so if we're gonna spend the money on something.
Yes.
Take it out of reserves or whatever, then you've got to have a line on the budget that shows withdrawal from reserves and another line on the budget that shows expenditures. And just putting a wild ass yes for a line on a budget item is, you know, you need to say, we're gonna spend these things on parks and trails. And here's a list, this beach, that trail, this signage program. That's gonna add to fifty thousand and you put the fifty thousand in the expenditure line. And up above, you put the draw from the parks reserve funded in the other line. So you, now, we always had a contingency fund. And the contingency fund is to cover up where something goes over or the thing that comes up all of a sudden that's small. If it's big, then you've got to amend the financial plan. That's not something you want to have to do.
Right, but at five thousand dollars, I guess my question is, would that not be considered small contingency?
As long as we're bound, budget balanced, it would fit under the contingency.
We can all, we we can reallocate within, I mean, there's a couple of ways of looking at it. So when you talk about the approved budget, you're talking about actually, we we approve the budget at a very high level in the financial plan. So within the budget, so so basically, things like strategic initiatives or specific projects do not have to be mentioned in the financial plan approval. Within the bud-, within our budget for the year, I mean, staff and council have the ability to reallocate amounts within the budget. So when we're talking about a specific project, it doesn't have to be included in the financial plan mention, um because the financial plan is at such a high level. Uh we can reallocate amount, amounts within the budget without having to make a financial plan amendment during the course of the year to fund initiatives like this. So 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 we are, I I believe we do have the flexibility to be able to do that.
We can play around in the parks line or in the general government line, but you can't transfer from general government to parks.
Gotcha. Uh Maureen, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the public consultation which is coming up really quickly. Uh the budget book to be posted on the website. What will that be? Is that a spreadsheet? Is it?
Um if you recall the financial plan book that would, that Kristen had published last year, it would be similar to that where it would have a capital section, it would have an operating section, it would have a section for each of the divisions. So we're we're working on that right now. I had locked up a template and Sophie is working on that with me. So it would have probably not as much detail. I'm not planning on putting five years, it would have five, proposed five-year financial plan in summary. It would have our expenditures by object, it would have our expenditures by division. But for each of the division, I don't think we need to do five years of expenditure. So the division section would be a little bit more user-friendly, so not numbers all over the place. And and a write-down for each of the divisions in terms of um what their priorities are for the year and what they, and and generally what they plan on doing for the upcoming year. So it would be similar to last year's book, organized a little bit differently. I plan on putting a reserves uh projection schedule in there as well, which is what we had talked about earlier. So so I will, I I plan on having by the end of the week, actually, our our reserves uh projection updated.
Will there be some um sort of historical context about prior year tax increases and so forth? Because if we don't provide that, people will go looking for it, I think.
I think in this particular book, and budget is typically forward-looking, so I would I would provide actuals for the previous year, but I wouldn't go into or I haven't planned on having an explanation of what the tax increase was last year. Because really, that's irrelevant to what the needs of the organization are going forward.
Yes, so.
Um I'm wondering if uh you have experience with or you would be uh what I'd like to propose is some kind of visual representation or some kind of chart or um.
Question?
Well, whatever you think. Uh I've seen, I saw one last night that was in blocks, that sort of the size of the block shows the size of the budget. Just so visually, uh the public and some members of council can get a better grip on this, who aren't.
Where the money's meant to be.
Well, you know, there's so many wonderful tools out there. I'm just wondering if you have experience with using them, whether you think that would be useful.
Definitely picture, they they say a picture is worth a thousand words, so. Um so I think what you're getting at is, again, sort of a pie chart or a block chart or something that shows expenditures um in different areas uh by ob-, whether by object or.
Yeah.
Uh I think definitely worked towards something into, like we may have even had something, I think, in last year's book.
Thank you. I just, I would love to see that as part of um especially the uh public part, but also for me.
Okay.
Um yes, right, last year, the public consultation on the budget were rather lonely meetings.
I told him that. He might be nearby.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't exactly have to do, set up extra chairs or 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 microphones for outside.
Well, maybe if we tell them it's a ten percent budgeting.
Yeah. So, yeah. Listen, with all, with everything that you've got, anything that could stimulate a degree of public interest. It was interesting, if you compare the public interest on the financial future of individuals' community, shall we say, to that of logging, you really have to wonder where people's minds are because we know this is terribly important. Try and get that message out there. So far, it's eluded us. And we only judge that by the response we've had from the general public, which I think was never said almost zero. And that probably because our increases haven't been particularly startling and haven't had. But I even, I can't say that I've had a lot of feedback on this subject. And I don't know if anyone else has. I would like to know.
Um I have had some questions on the ferry. Um people saying, my tax, uh property tax uh went up by so much this year. I hope you're not gonna plan an increase.
The assessment went up, yeah.
Yeah, the assessment, well, the property taxes, people hate to pay. So there's some concerns about affordability and uh I'm I just thought I'd bring to the meeting that this had been a concern that had been expressed.
Right, the assessments are based on this.
People don't equate assessment relate, understand how the tax rate and the assessments work. So maybe we, Shale's pointed me up to a really nice little uh video that's on somebody's website. I can't remember the one. So maybe we, do we have that actually linked on ours? Because maybe we should as part of the process.
We can, there's several out there. I had used last year in the consultation process in the District of West Vancouver, I had used a very simple example from Niagara Falls. Um it was a one-minute video and I had edited into my um presentation for the public so that they could see that an increase in assessments does not mean an increase in
Property taxes.
In property taxes. I mean, we've had that discussion around our dinner table when we've had guests over and trying to convince people that if your assessment goes up by ten percent, doesn't mean your taxes go up by ten percent. It's, it it takes a while to 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 explain that concept and get it here. So if if you think that's important, definitely, we, I can make that a part of the public consultation. I'll I'll find a video that would be very easy and uh I'd be more, that's less talking for me and more, more media.
All right, I just save a lot of anxiety.
Looking just drop the check and then I'll go to Melanie.
And that actually, if you go back to, sorry, if you go back to this chart here, that's exactly what I was trying to demonstrate uh over here in that first line, is hey, you're assessed, the average assessed home in Bowen Island went up by ten percent. But your taxes did not go up by ten percent if we don't have a tax increase.
Right. So the, the other thing is that people, people find surrogate answers when they can't get an answer to a question. So at the beginning of the year, when all you have is assessed value and all you care about is what does anything want to cost me, you want to apply that information to get your answer. And when people say, well, you can't apply that information to get your answer, you get frustrated and ask the second questions. But the minute that you come out and say to people, it's gonna cost you this percentage, this amount is the mean average, this is the amount of the house, suddenly the the assessed value thing ceases to be a big deal. What becomes a big deal now is the real information. So I I do think it's, this is a first six months of the year discussion that we have every year and every community has every year. But the second, as soon as we tell them how much the tax increase is, that will become the point of discussion rather than than the assessed value, I think. Now, Melanie, you want to say something?
Yeah, I think what was challenging last year is that we had a lot of um residences that went above the average and that was rare.
That's where we need to explain things, I think, yeah, because I think there's there's a misunderstanding. So I I talked about the average here. So if somebody's assessment and and I guess, if somebody's assessment goes up by more than the average, then what's happening is there's a shift of taxes going on from those properties where people's assessments increased by less than the average. So the way I like to equate it is is to think of your municipality as a strata. And every, if if everybody started with an equal val-, if everybody's property was valued equally, everybody would pay the same amount of taxes. Then however, if somebody else, if one property went up by ten percent and became worth relatively more than another property that stayed constant, then they're gonna be paying more in terms of taxes and there'll be a shift in taxes from the property that didn't go up in value to the property that went up by more. I hope I haven't lost you guys or I hope I'm having.
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
But essentially, it it it's, what you pay in taxes, you know, on your property is relative to what your property is worth in comparison to all the properties in the community. And we can put that in a very easy slide. Actually, that video that we, that I had talked about from Niagara Falls uses a community of three houses and each starts off at an equal value and then it kind of moves through the pages. So if if you think that that would help people understand how you more than half of it.
That I'm returning it forward because it's a question that's already come. So that would be great.
Yeah.
Gary?
Yeah, just on that provincial budget and all their taxes, excessive taxes on empty homes and this sort of thing in homes over three million, there's also an additional on there. Are we gonna see any of that this year?
I don't, I don't think that's for.
Or is that just?
It's, it's not.
It's not gonna impact two thousand and eighteen taxes at all. And I don't think, I I think those are just proposed legislative changes at this point in time. I've already, in fact, had a call from somebody from Toronto who owns a property here and was asking how his property taxes are gonna be impacted. And um we don't know at this point. I believe there was also a.
A fact sheet that Maureen had.
Yes, well, I can see.
I got the impression that the province was gonna levy the tax, not us.
Well, yeah, no.
Well, then it won't impact our budget or anything else.
No, not our budget, but in order to impact people's taxes.
Right, but so does increases in sales tax or income tax or anything else.
People's lawnmowers, individuals, yeah.
But it is extraneous to this conversation in that they have a different method of collecting and it won't appear on our tax bills.
Yeah.
Right, you they've got different ways of registering all that.
So just be just be on your
So so we don't have to
It's going to be another bureaucracy to collect it.
Yeah, of course, huh, let's not go into that one.
All right. So the question I have for council is, we are looking at a six point six percent tax increase plus our one point five percent legislative increase for a total of eight point one. And I made that point because I had a conversation with Greg Moore and one with Richard Stewart, Porquetland and Porch, Porquetland. And uh Greg had managed to get the newspaper to always have the legislative number spoken up differently, but Richard wasn't able to pull that off with his newspaper, and he was so mad because every year, his tax rate went up by one and a half percent more than Greg's did, even if they had exactly the same tax increase, so uh just from a communications perspective, uh keeping that uh the one point five percent legislative increase uh as a separate number from the uh other tax increase is just something to keep in mind, that one might want to think about this from a communications perspective. But that being a minor point aside, uh we're talking eight point one percent, do we have members of council who are going to be uh striving to reduce that number uh or generally speaking, are people uh willing to roll with it? And I want to hear from from each of you and and go around the table, it's because you're basically kind of committing at this point to an approach, and I don't want to get blindsided later, all right, and Raj, I certainly don't want to blindside Raj later with council saying, well, we decided we should do this, okay, I'm going to start with
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, the municipal tax before any increase, I'm sorry I was late, is that um the last year's mill rate on the total increase in value, so the total assessed value?
It would be last year's mill rate adjusted to collect the same amount of taxation revenue that we collected last year.
Okay, so I mean, because there's always, we've got a non-market increase in the in the taxes.
Oh, actually, we've got, we've taken that, if I go back, you missed that slide right here.
Yeah, so that's what you're taking. Yeah.
So the non-market change is called new construction here, so we that is additional, in addition to what I have.
Yeah, yeah. So but that two point eight is, so the total increase of tax revenue that we're collecting is actually ten?
Or eleven or something?
No, the two point eight is newfound, it's newfound revenue, so.
Ten nine?
Right.
Yeah, but but it's um
Sorry.
But our total expenditures have gone up on the other side, because we found all that extra revenue, so we've got, does that whole column add to eight point one?
Yes, it does.
Okay, because that's just, that's what I was
So essentially, what I've done is when you get down to the bolden points there, that two hundred and five thousand six hundred is a combination of the three lines above.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that's a, is that seven point, oh, that's only one point three then, is it, or is it seven point?
Seven point three is the
Just the three hundred and sixty one thousand, yeah.
Okay, but two point eight and seven point three, you don't add to four point?
Actually, those numbers are newfound revenues, so you're actually subtracting those from the seven point three.
Right, okay, so the the seven point three is the the four point four is the net of the three, right, okay, not the sum of the three.
Yeah.
So yes, it would be something more like, it the total dollars of our budget at the for this year will be more like eleven percent higher than the total dollars of the previous budget. Yeah.
But in terms
All of this other stuff.
But it's only an effective tax increase of eight point one due to the to the coyote of new construction, so that's, yeah.
New
Which which a large we were offsetting because
Well, no, I just wanted to clarify that the eight point wasn't wasn't the gross number, it was the net of new construction. Um, a lot of those numbers are like the one point five and I don't know how much is is really optional in the council policy and contract government operating items, can we flip back to, is there a slide that shows the two hundred and five?
Sorry, the uh actually, the three sixty one, so the slide that talks about the three sixty one is this one right here, so it's essentially
Okay, so CPI is non-debatable, waste and recycling is non-debatable, we've already announced and signed up for the emergency response notification system, so short of un-hiring a new planner, there's no non-debatable in there. So we have to go out with that, have we hired a new planner?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, still, no, so that's the only non-debatable is to say, don't hire a new planner, everything else has
If we flip back though, can you flip back to that last question, right?
Oh, the slide?
That one, yeah, so this, that's the three sixty one that we just looked at.
Yeah, and the one the five, the one point five is non-debatable, so the new operating request, the library and the planner are the only things, so we're talking maybe maybe max we could squeeze up, three percent.
Yeah, okay, good, good perspective on the thing.
And the re- new operating requests, can we have detail on that one?
Yes, we went through those, those were uh basically these items here.
Okay, so I I'm not, the roads would say that maybe the summer's due to be increased by law patrol, and this is where we need to look at the community engagement survey, um how much of those things did the public want? I mean, we've, the professional fees and the environmental studies.
Those should have been in the contract increases, actually, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and and those are basically, that's largely figuring out what's going on with Manin Bay and stuff, and we've been wanting to do that. Um, so
So you can't say enough to tell about that, I think, as you point to.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, you know, short of, I mean, is there anything in that list, Maureen, that the only one I can think of, I didn't think people were terribly unhappy about the bylaw enforcement in the code.
They weren't unhappy about it.
Well, I don't, I would, they probably didn't realize it was a cost, they were just all some Well, I I didn't think they were unhappy about it, um, so maybe, you know, there's a there's a bit of wiggling, but if we go out for a big thing, then we can wiggle some of those other things off and say, yes, we listen to you, we reduce the budget. You always like, you always like to think that they listen to, they listen to.
I suppose that is, that is a point, it will depend on how many people do show up and and what accomplishments are, and how much individual councillors are impacted by that uh person, with how much their response will be, but uh but um
What I would request is when you're looking at these, as 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 you talk about them, I I think my request would be if your new operating requests are not acceptable, then you ask staff to bring them down to a certain level and you leave it up to staff to decide what things get cut out and what things don't get cut out, rather than you guys sitting here and debating on these item by item by item. I I I think that's a staff function, your your function would be more or less, excuse me for defining your function or your role, but I I would appreciate it if if you would say, hey, sixty seven thousand in new requests is not acceptable to us, get it down to another number, and then you you leave it up to to us to figure out how we're going to get it down on your behalf.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I was just trying to point out that it's not going to be easy yet.
No, never is.
I think I think you can just state this around the table, anybody who wants to speak to this, feel free.
I mean, I think you could say direction, though, um like, we would, we don't think anything more than a five percent tax increase is acceptable. And then staff has to go away and say, well, if you do that, then we'll cut this and this and this is what it means, so I'm comfortable with going out with the way it is.
Okay, good, let's go out with it, Maureen.
Um, I have to study this, like, this is, this is new to me, I'm not on the finance committee, and I would want to want to look at this, but uh you know, I I think the community knows that we've done all that work with the library and the community center and the fire hall, all these things are coming. And uh so but I'm, I'll look at it and do my reading and all that, but I'm not prepared to make any kind of
Fair enough, yes, yeah, fair enough, Maureen?
I would find it helpful to have figures associated with each of those line items, that would help me get a sense of
I think that brings it back to putting council, oh, you can cut this out, you can cut this out, you can cut this out. I mean, I can I can put approximate numbers on them if 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 council wishes me to do s- do so, but I
I think you'll get asked questions from the public, as well as having those figures at hand would be helpful down down the road. I won't get into one or the other, I think they're all important. Um, one other point. When this goes to, this is the public communication piece, when this goes to the the public, they're going to be looking for snapshots, why is it so much this year compared to last year? So what would the answer be to that question?
We're doing stuff. And and I think another big point is, we had to hire a consultant to tell us how much money we should be paying people because we can't, our pay rates were so low that we just simply couldn't compete in the lower mainland market.
Okay, so there's staff salaries?
Yeah, so we have uh staff salaries that are associated with us upper game, and that people have to look at the accomplishments over this four-year period to decide whether or not how the municipality has up their game as far as projects undertaken and 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 what we're doing. You know, I I would, I think I would come out from that thing, that uh value for money approach and and us moving into a competitive world.
I think you need a list, because otherwise all people will hear is that we're getting an eight percent increase because of staff salaries, and that's not the case, so having that list ready
No, 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 yeah. Sure, yeah.
We do have a list like that, Maureen, I've got a detailed list that breaks all of these things down. So it's it's just a matter of, as as the mayor was saying, how you're going to present it to the public, do you want the public getting into the weeds of all of your individual operating items or not, I I'd have to discuss that with uh with the CIO in terms of 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 what presentation we go to the public with.
You better go to Melanie, you got your head up, go on then.
Yeah, can we go back to the slide where you have all the all the numbers, like
This one right here?
Yes, it's a new construction, so um, because that's that's a positive side, I think, that's where we got money coming in. So where did the, is that what was, we got from last year, or is that what you're projecting that we will get from building rooms and everything?
This is values on the tax roll that were not there in the previous year, so it is the new value that's been added to the roll, so new new can, new buildings or homes are being built on the island that we didn't have taxation revenue for before, and so this is newly found revenue.
Okay, so that is, that is the property tax you're receiving from new
Yes. From newly constructed properties.
Okay, and the other revenue increases are what you were getting from?
Uh, there's permit revenues and bylaw funds revenues uh included in that new, so it's I I would call it, rather than permit revenue, I would call it development and um development and planning, new development and planning revenue. So our our director of planning feels it's appropriate to increase the amount of revenue that we will receive in two thousand and eighteen, uh the budget level, based on what he projects activity to be on an ongoing basis into the future.
And another reason that it's going up is there's federal and provincial money now available, right? We had uh, we didn't spend a lot of money for a lot of years because there was no upper money, uh upper government money available. Now we take things to light the spirit trail, where this is a twenty thousand dollar improvement to our uh that's only costing us five thousand, we've got a a bike barn going in that, you know, is a thirty six thousand dollar improvement uh that i- is only going to cost us a few thousand dollars once we take out the in-time uh donations on it, so uh there's a, we have the corner by Charlie's Lane, where we're finally going to make that thing safe so that somebody can go around there on their bike without fear of death on the corner, uh and that again is something that's going to be largely funded by outside agencies, but we have to come up with our share, so if we add up all of the, all of the capital projects that we're getting very good bang for our buck, um it comes out to a a couple of percent of our budget, how's that?
Is that part of our communication piece out is highlighting how much grant funding we're hoping to leverage for the next year?
Sure, yeah, that's probably a nice piece, um, Savannah?
Oops, it just escaped me, oh, I know, it was the water treatment plant, uh in these um numbers uh I didn't notice, that's a big new um infrastructure cost, I was just wondering where where's the water treatment plant, is it?
Oh, the water treatment plant is a utilities item and it was in the capital, so I will have to spread it over three years, but it is a six million dollar item right there, sixty seven percent of which is funded through external funding.
Oh, there it is, okay. So does that mean next year it will be the same six million dollar number?
If we don't do any work on it in two thousand and eighteen, yes, we we would put apply that money in the following year, so what I will do in the five-year plan is I will break this six million dollars out and uh project it over the three years, right now, I've just put the total value of, and I believe that was done last year as well, even for the fire hall, for example, uh when I split it out over the five years, the right way would be to put the amount that's projected to be spent in in each year, so each respective year, that it should go in, rather than showing the entire amount in two thousand and eighteen, but for purposes of illustration here, I've given you the full value in the proposed budget right now.
Thank you.
I could try and revert to your original question, on the eight percent. We know what the median house price is, do we have any idea last year what the median house paid in terms of its overall, someone had to write a check or whatever it was for this amount, do we know what that amount was roughly?
For taxes?
Yeah, property taxes, just very roughly, I mean, it could be a hypothetical.
I had mentioned, so the median houseful taxes unchanged, oh, the actual amount of taxes, I can get, I can get that to
Let's say it's four thousand dollars, right, or three thousand dollars, whatever you want it to be.
No, I'm just, I'm just taking
The example I want to take is, let's suppose if somebody last year paid three thousand dollars property taxes, or
Yeah, the number you have to take.
Are we now talking about an increase of eight percent on that total sum of three thousand dollars?
Assume none of the assessed values changed, yes.
Provided, yes, exactly.
Okay, so we're now, we're that, so we're now from our our three thousand dollars, we're saying we're going to increase this by eight percent.
Yeah.
So it's now going to pay an extra two hundred and forty dollars per year.
Michael, so if the councillor's speaking, could you sit in acting mayor chair, uh acting mayor for a few minutes?
Yes, um, so, so we're now, we're now saying there's now someone's going to write the two hundred and forty, so so that, I think I'm looking at absolute total simplicity, that includes things like taxes, any increase in taxes for Metro?
No.
No, this is just municipal, yeah.
Just municipal, those are shown as an extra level, those are shown above this, this is where we get our taxes, these are the lists above our taxes, right? Island Trust increase, school tax will all be extra, okay. I'm not sure if you take Metro or Island Trust, just to that we have some idea of what it's going to be, those taxes also, which the individual will have to pay, what percentage they're running at, because I think we need to take that in consideration as well, of course, in the end, a person writes only one check or only pays one bill, and that's a total bill for property taxes, they don't pay it in separate amounts. And I for one would be very uncomfortable agreeing to eight percent until I've got a handle of what someone in this community is actually going to have to write a check for, it's like buying a car, I don't want to be told I've got this tax and this tax and this tax and this tax and this tax, and on top I've got to write recycling battery tax that someone forgot, and then I want to know what I've got the check, either side of the check I got to write. So I hope in our simplicity, it's fine for us to talk about the municipal tax, well, of course, it's our right, we should, but I think as well, uh and I will certainly make a point of it, saying, well, look, okay, that's the municipal portion, but beware, the municipal portion doesn't stand on its own, if if part of a basket of taxes had all got put together on one piece of paper, that people are going to have to pay. So I I'm just, I'm just asking that, not only do we So I'm just, I'm just asking that, not only, if we are to be really honest, we are going to have to give some indication of what the overall bill for our community is while I accept our responsibilities for the municipality.
What I would, what I would, in my communication to the public open with is a pie chart that shows municipal taxes and other taxes. Typically, 50% of a household's taxes are for the municipal portion and approximately 50% are for taxes imposed on behalf of other taxing authorities. I think what we should do is be very clear that that is a total taxes to the municipality, but we don't know what the other parties are levying or what their increases are going to be until usually April sometime. And so we should make it very clear that we are talking about the municipal tax portion because that's all we can talk to. We have no control over what the other taxing authorities charge us, it's a flow-through. And it could be, and you know, so I don't think we should be speaking to the increases that they are going to be imposing other than saying that we know that there are, this is about 50% of your tax bill and we are only talking about the municipal portion. And so your taxes may go up. Essentially, you have a component of taxes coming from other authorities as well.
I just remember the wonderful pie chart in our new branding that was on the back of our most recent property tax bill and that might be a good example. Here's what happened last year, it's already done. And people might remember that if they're like me and they look at that.
Or to your point exactly, as Suella had pointed out, we could point out what last year's increase was so people can work it into their increases if they want to see the total impact on households of all. That would be an alternative approach as well.
I mean, we've raised a sudden, I think we've raised the awareness of the fact that ours is a part of a bigger bill.
And that, that piece I'll definitely, definitely be doing.
Okay. Anything further anybody would like to throw into this little conversation? Okay, I think we're done. Awesome.
Thank you, Roger.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Roger, awesome.
Excellent.